Welcome to the Monday, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Tack.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Clemens.
Here.
Alderman Notes is absent. Alderman Powers.
Here.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Here.
Alderman Levert.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Alderman Walder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item is comments by mayor, and the first thing I would like to say is this week we had the Boards and Commissions Dinner, and I just want to say publicly that we are so blessed to have so many volunteers in the city who work for both the caucus, city council, boards, commissions, and who do the work of the city, and I think we really should be appreciative of that fact. Next item is a resolution of appreciation for retired Chief of Police Carl Waldorf. At this time, I will read the motion and resolution. Whereas Carl M. Waldorf has been a dedicated employee of the city of Lake Forest since January fourth, nineteen ninety-four, and whereas Carl M. Waldorf honorably retired from the city on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, after serving the residents of Lake Forest in various capacities within the police department for over thirty years as he progressed through his career, ultimately advancing to the position of police chief in two thousand and sixteen, and whereas Carl M. Waldorf served in the following roles during his steadfast career: police officer, detective, arrest team supervisor with NEPAS Mobile Field Force, Calea accreditation manager, director of firearms training, police pension board president, assistant team commander for the NEPAS Mobile Field Force, Board of Directors for the Northwest Police Academy, major crime task force executive board chairman, patrol sergeant, commander, deputy police chief, police chief, and whereas Carl M. Waldorf had the distinguished honor to work with ten mayors, two city managers, four police chiefs, one public safety director, and four fire chiefs, and whereas Carl M. Waldorf was the driving force behind the creation for the Lake Forest Police Department's Citizen Police Academy, which offers residents the opportunity to learn about the day-to-day operations of modern police departments and the challenges faced, and whereas Carl M. Waldorf promoted community engagement seeing events and fundraisers like Buns and Hoeses Burger Battle, Cop on a Rooftop, Bike Rodeo, Croya Doughnut Bowl, Toys for Tots, and Autism Awareness Events as a way to build bridges between police officers and community members of all ages, and whereas Carl M. Waldorf was among the first in his field to understand the need for enhanced mental health resources for the community and for police personnel, and effectively advocated for the addition of a social worker and chaplain positions to address the need, and whereas Carl M. Waldorf valued relationships and was a mentor, he positively impacted the lives of his colleagues, residents, business owners, and residents old and young, whereas Carl M. Waldorf will be sincerely missed by his friends and colleagues and the residents of Lake Forest, and we wish him well as he embarks on a new chapter in life. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the city organization and the residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Carl M. Waldorf for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to Carl with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the May twentieth, twenty-four meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carl? Are you coming up?
Just a quick word of thanks, because I know you have a lot of budding young artists in the audience, and they probably want to get next door to sweets as quickly as my kids do. I have been blessed in my thirty years to work with a huge number of great law enforcement officers, many of them are in this room, some have retired and spread out across the country, and some have passed away. I'm also thankful for the support that this board and your predecessors have always shown the police department, particularly the last eight years as I was chief. I'm very thankful that you're exploring a new station, that has obviously been the dream of generations of law enforcement officers before and after me, so I appreciate your work in that regard, and all I would ask is that please take care of Lake Forest and take care of these officers, because I guarantee they spend every day trying to take care of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carl, at this time, will you come up with your family to take some photos? He's going to take it in front of us. Do you want us to come out, or are we doing it here?
Can you stand behind me?
Okay.
Okay, the next item is Board and Commission Appointments/Reappointments. There is only one this evening. We will be appointing John Norkus to the Parks and Recreation Board. May I have a motion to approve the appointment?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The next item is informational. There's a slide to come?
There's a slide.
Okay, I would like to announce the Meet the Fleet event, so please save the date, Friday, June seventh, come out and meet all of our Public Works equipment and the Public Works staff. Feel free to climb aboard and explore a variety of the city's vehicles, trucks, and construction equipment. This is a family event, so please consider attending. At this time, I would like to excuse the police who need to leave and get on with business. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is comments by city manager. Manager Wishe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council, good evening. Pleased to see so many people here tonight, this really is one of the more enjoyable city council meetings we have all year, and it's especially true because of the opportunity to recognize so many talented young artists in our community, and so there's a huge crowd. I don't know if I saw Morgan Adams. Morgan, you here? Oh, right in front. Thank you. So I'm going to turn it over to Morgan Adams, Executive Director of the Deerpath Art League, to announce this year's winners.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for being here. My name is Morgan Adams, and I am the Executive Director of the Deerpath Art League here in Lake Forest. The art league was established in nineteen fifty-four, and the two events that we are best known for are the Art Fair on the Square, held every Labor Day weekend, and the Emerging Artist Exhibit during the month of April. Our mission as a nonprofit is to spark, nurture, and enhance creativity while raising awareness and appreciation of the arts within the community. We are so excited tonight to present the mayoral award winners for our seventeenth annual Emerging Artist Exhibit. I want to first recognize all of the participating storefronts, as a dozen stores within Market Square volunteered their window space for the entire month of April. Participating stores showcased over a hundred and sixty pieces of unique artworks from over twelve local schools. A special thank you to each of one of these stores, Market Square, the city of Lake Forest, and the teachers and faculty of our schools for partnering with us on such an important event. And now for the best part, please join me in recognizing the emerging artists whose works stood out as exceptional. From Cherokee Elementary, we have Elizabeth Gudding. Next, we have Nina Lubeck. Ryan Timponi. Next, we have Deerpath Middle School, and Haley Mimo. Olivia Witt. Syrian Patel. Up next, we have Eastlake Academy, and that's Everett Doge. Yasek Majewski. Yacinta Patel. Casper Cozel. Lily Johannan. Monica Barilla. From Everett Academy, we have Amelia Leary. Nolan Wright. Teddy Taylor. And from Kinder Haven, we have Cece Orsini. Millie Ravini. Reese Asby. From Lake Bluff Middle School, we have Liam McSane. Piper Coppins. Portia Legrand. From Lake Forest Country Day School, we have Eli Al-Rakar. Nathan Foster. Winston Alley. From Lake Forest High School, Gabby Heinselmann. Yamina Garcia de Linas Hernandez. Maggie Jarvinen. And from the School of St. Mary's Primary Grade Center. Emery Guizwaldo. Jack Pluma. Lena Duer. From the School of St. Mary's Upper Grade Center, Henry Jesson. Julia Melshimer. Kyle Castle. From Sheridan Elementary, we have Hannah Galay. Mia Konkerewick. Mia Williams. Olive Zungadi. And from Woodlands Academy, Carolyn Holland. Lauren Brandenburg. And Vanessa Teles. Sure thing. Thank you again to all of our artists for sharing your wonderful talents with us. Exceptional job this year.
Mr. Mayor, before I continue with my report, we'll take a minute for families to be able to leave.
Congratulations. I'll take these to schools and caf. Thank you so much, baby. It's so good to see you. This was a big house to visit.
Can you drink some water? The child needs some. I was social chairman at the Beta House. Emma Zoo. Where'd you go? Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, that certainly cleared the room, but happy to continue if... There may be after Kathy's presentation, so maybe hold that thought for a few minutes. So the second item in my report tonight is a presentation from Community Development Director Kathy Zerniak. You will see included on your omnibus agenda is a recommended contract award to assist staff and the community in developing preliminary planning and design work associated with the Bank Lane Streetscape Enhancement Plan, and as the council's aware, this was a project that's been identified as a priority by the council over the last year, really to capitalize on the timing of the grant-funded Deerpath Streetscape Project, which is scheduled to begin next year. Really looking to combine these projects in a manner that will hopefully minimize construction disruption throughout the community. So here to provide a high-level overview of the project and tonight's requested approvals is Kathy Zerniak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. No one wanted to stay and hear my presentation. It's okay. You are all aware of the initiative to look at Bank Lane as a pedestrian corridor and how we can enhance it. The whole discussion about Bank Lane is probably at least twenty years old. Every time we've studied the Central Business District, the discussion about Bank Lane has come up. As people have walked it, there's always been comments that it's such a unique corridor and such an extraordinary opportunity, but it's never been pursued until now. Under the direction of Mayor Tack, the Central Business District Advisory Group updated the Central Business District Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, and one priority that came out was Bank Lane and enhancing that corridor all the way from Irvine to Wisconsin as a unique pedestrian corridor. May not all happen at once, but the idea was to get a plan in place, recognizing the different character of the different blocks, and to really identify pieces of updates, enhancements, that could move forward, especially knowing that we're going to go forward with Deerpath Streetscape improvements, which were approved in two thousand and twenty, and in connection with any infrastructure improvements that come out of the study that's currently underway. So just very high level, some aspects of Bank Lane that may be considered, how to make it more attractive to pedestrians, safe for vehicles, able to function, continue to function both as a service, essentially a service alley. It provides an important service, delivery and trash pickup for businesses, but at the same time, ways to perhaps allow it to be closed off in the evenings, to allow restaurants or businesses to spill out into the street, perhaps on a Friday night or Saturday night. The plan, the discussions might involve looking at signage, looking at public art, looking at hardscape, landscape, lighting, and certainly traffic circulation. You know that a number of months ago, we instituted a pilot project on Bank Lane between Deerpath and Illinois, where we converted it to one-way south with diagonal parking. So we will look at that, consider the feedback that we've gotten, which for the vast amount of comments have been very positive, appreciating that we have added parking spaces, with some discussion about do we need to identify... do we need to identify perhaps the need for additional right-of-way in that area if and when we see some redevelopment on that block? All those considerations really need to be, need to take into effect the context of Bank Lane and the surrounding area. Certainly, we heard throughout the Central Business District discussions the importance of the historic character, maintaining that character, maintaining the distinctiveness, really showcasing the important historic buildings and perhaps planning for replacement of some of those buildings that aren't quite so important. We certainly need to consider the ease of maintenance, and we will be engaging members of our public work staff, as we already have in the selection of this consultant, to make sure that we're looking at durability of materials and ease of maintenance as we look at snow plowing or stormwater runoff. All of those aspects need to be considered. Inviting a unique experience, and again importantly coordinating improvements, especially those right near Deer Path with the construction that will get underway in 2025. Again, it's likely that we're going to see different blocks of Bank Lane have different character as they do today, but part of this on some of those blocks that are further away from Market Square will be a plan that will help provide direction to those who may choose to redevelop some of those properties. We'll have a plan in place that talks about, do we need wider sidewalks? Do we need additional right-of-way? Do we need gathering areas, landscaping? And what should the city negotiate for as some of those redevelopment proposals come forward? The timeline, we would anticipate, we would ask for your action tonight to allow us to engage the Lakota Group. The Lakota Group is one of six firms that submitted proposals. They are not the lowest bid, but we felt it was important because of their current work with Thomas Engineering, a strong engineering group who has worked very well with our city public work staff, and because of Lakota's involvement in the Deer Path Streetscape. We had a full range of companies, most local, but one from as far away as California, and the price of that reflected that. But we also know that the Lakota Group is certainly familiar. They've worked in Lake Forest quite a bit, but they are also not intimately familiar. Although the Central Business District Plan established the groundwork for the work on Bank Lane, Lakota comes in with a bit of a fresh set of eyes. And with your approval tonight, we will be engaging with other staff and doing a walk down Bank Lane in the next few days with the Lakota Group. We will contact businesses and property owners along Bank Lane to provide some initial input. We will develop some concepts and then have design charrettes, where we invite anyone from the community. I know we have members from the Preservation Foundation here tonight, and certainly we hope that they participate. So we actually can have groups put pen to paper and sketch out ideas and work through visions that they have, as well as concerns and cautions. We anticipate taking concepts before the Historic Preservation Commission in July, development of a Streetscape Plan in July and August, with the blocks closest to Deer Path being the first blocks that are focused. We will during that time be coming back to the City Council periodically, probably as part of the city manager's report to give you updates. We'll certainly invite you to participate in any of the public input sessions or the charrettes. We will have a Streetscape Plan draft available for public review and comment in a variety of ways in August, and then we expect to be back to you in September for approval of a plan and identification of areas, pieces of that plan that we want to move forward with in the near term. And then we will incorporate that into the upcoming budget cycle. So what we're requesting of the council tonight as part of the Omnibus Agenda is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with the Lakota Group for supporting staff work on the Bank Lane Enhancement Plan.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments from the council for Director Zerniak? None? Okay, at this time, I'd like to offer an opportunity for public comment on this matter. Is there anybody that would like to address the council? Okay. We will then move on. This time ordinarily, we have an opportunity for citizens to address the council on general matters. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to committee reports, and we will start with the Public Works Committee. At this time, Alderman Goshgarian will present.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just sort of a brief pitch. We heard the wonderful comments about our outgoing Chief of Police Carl Waldorf, and he was instrumental in setting up the first Citizens Police Academy, and the city has expanded upon that with the Citizens Fire Academy. We have Lake Forest 101. And the newest addition to engagement of our community is the Public Works Academy. And as you might imagine, this is designed to gain hands-on experience and insight into the essential services that keep our city running smoothly at the first-ever Public Works Academy. It's an interactive presentation. They'll be doing faculty tours, facility tours, I'm sorry. It's going to be Wednesday evenings, June 12th through July 24th. No classes on the week of July 4th. And although I have been told that the participation filled up rather quickly already, there may be a little more consideration in terms of some residents may or may not be able to attend and some attrition. I think it maybe will be subject to further consideration if they might open up a few more slots. I personally, my experiences with Citizens Police Academy and Citizens Fire Academy, it's been fantastic. Public Works is that section of the city that people often don't think about. You don't think about fresh water every day when you go to the tap. You don't think about stormwater management on a routine basis, and you always assume that the garbage is going to be picked up twice a week and recycling is going to be done once a week. So the men and women in Public Works are sort of the quiet ones around town that seem to really maintain the quality of living, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity to engage them and see the work, the good work that they do. And I asked Public Works Director Mike Thomas a little bit earlier today, just exactly how many full-time, part-time employees do we have within Public Works? And I think it's 75 roughly. So it's a big segment of our city services that's out there, and it touches every one of us each and every single day. Hopefully, we don't need police protection. Hopefully, we don't need fire assistance, but Public Works is something I want every day, and that's what makes Lake Forest a really wonderful place. So again, this is, the class is filled up, but there may be some consideration to opening up a few more slots. So just wanted to mention that, and thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chairman Goshgarian. The next item is Field Court and Spring Lane Water Main Replacement and Valve Repairs. This will be presented by Byron Coots, Superintendent of Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Wanted to give a brief update on the Field Court and Spring Lane project. This is our annual water main project this year. In terms of how we pick projects every year, there's many factors that go into it. I would say three of the main factors we look at would be age, is the pipe past its useful service life? Size, is it undersized? And then also water main breaks in terms of it just being a nuisance for maintenance. So looking at the map at the right, you'll see the two locations that we are proposing this year. The one on the top right is Spring Lane from Mayflower to Lake Road, and then the bottom right is Field Court from Route 60 to Magnolia Lane. In terms of Field Court, we have experienced numerous water main breaks over the last few years. I can't remember the exact number, but I know it's more than a handful, quite a bit more than any other street that we experienced. That becomes really time-consuming for operations, and I will say this location is pretty unique. A standard water main would be anywhere between five and six feet deep, whereas this one is about 10 feet deep. It's under a berm, and it's really at the extent of what our equipment can handle. So it usually does require outside crews to come in and do that. So with this project on this block, we'd be looking to make it less shallow, still meeting guidelines at about five to six feet, but it would make it much easier in the future for any maintenance. The next location is Spring Lane, and there are some potential water quality issues. I will first say that we are mitigating those issues currently by basically having it on our frequent flushing list. So basically, every couple of weeks, a crew member has to go out there and manually flush the hydrants just to keep the water turning over, because there's a certain water age that you want all the water to be in. So basically, there's a dead end on each side, and the water just isn't naturally circulating in the system as you would like. So we are proposing to basically replace the old dead ends and basically extend the water main all the way through, which would allow for increased circulation, which is what we go for in general. We want a loop system everywhere we can, and it'll reduce basically having maintenance staff out there on a every-other-week basis. The project also includes seven valves throughout the city, so those are just replacing the valve itself. So if there was a water main break somewhere, that's where you go to basically shut off a segment of the main. So these valves are either probably either stuck closed or stuck open. So upgrading some of those valves every year is very important. The budget was $1,030,000. We bid it out in the last month, and we received three bids with the low bid from C. Zabbo Contracting at about $990,000. In terms of schedule for both of the projects, Field Court, we're looking to start in late June with final completion late August. This area, it's located in the grass, under the berm, so really the timing of doing this work during the year isn't that important in terms of traffic. So we're really able to complete it anytime. We're just looking to kind of get it as quick as we can. That's what we're proposing, late June. The other location, Spring Lane, with it being much closer to the beach, with the boardwalk project going on and just people wanting to go to that area during the summer, we are proposing to start the project after Labor Day with a final completion in mid-October. In terms of both of these projects, we are proposing to directionally drill. So basically, they have a drill rig, which will drill a hole, and they'll pull the water main back in about two or 300-foot sections. And that's as opposed to open cutting, where you're, actually you have an excavator and you're actually digging. So this will reduce the impacts of traffic, and it also reduces the amount of pavement restoration. And this item is on your Omnibus list for vote consideration tonight, and I can take any questions now.
Questions, comments? Okay, can we move on to the next item, which is the McClory Bike Path Resurfacing Project?
Thank you. This item has a few good stories to tell. The first is, I want to say residents, we heard you. So in terms of the 2023 community-wide survey, the priority for trails was pretty high. Although we do have a trail system currently, it was basically from that survey was noted that we need to look at it in terms of resurfacing and keeping it in a good condition going forward. So it's a deteriorating bike path. It's rough and hazardous in some spots for bicyclists and pedestrians. In addition to just resurfacing it, we're also proposing to also widen it from eight feet to 10 feet. 10 feet is considered more of the standard minimum width if you were building a new trail today. So that is, with it being a little bit wider, it'll make it a little bit safer, so that is definitely a good thing. So the budget was $350,000. Whenever we bid it out, the original scope was actually from Ryan, Illinois, which is the picture on the right. That's what we originally thought we were able to, we're able to get with that funding. So we opened the bids on April 11th, and were pleasantly surprised. There was very competitive prices with the low bid being $197,000. So at that point, the original bids were rejected as there was available budget. And that brings me to the second good story to tell, which is that we're able to actually extend the limits a little bit further, south to Wesley, and really get more out of our budget than we were originally thinking, so that's a good thing. We then rebid the project out with the extended scope. Received four bids, with the low bid being Manaville Construction at about $332,000. And that name may sound familiar, and it should, because they, Manaville actually just completed the Elloa parking lot in the last couple of weeks, and I think most people think it went pretty well. The one thing about Manaville is they're very organized and they're very efficient. They like to get their projects done fairly quickly, which is really a good fit for this type of project, because we're having to close the path during the milling and resurfacing. In terms of the schedule, we're still locking down the exact date in the slide. I know it says late May or early June. I think at this point, per talks today with the contractor, we're probably thinking June 3rd. We don't, we're trying to avoid starting next week, at the end of next week with Memorial Day. So probably most likely, starting on Monday, June 3rd, but we will keep everyone updated on that. So this map shows the extended limits after we rebid it out. So if you look at the red, that's the proposed resurfacing. So starting at Illinois at the north and then going south to Wesley. And then the other line that you see on here is the orange line, which is the bike detour, like I said a minute ago. The construction's going to be about three weeks, and we looked at a lot of different options, but there's really, well, there isn't any way to do it without closing the path and then detoring it. So basically, starting at the south, the bicyclists would be from Wesley to Sheridan Road, and then we made the decision, due to safety, to basically have them go into the neighborhood just due to the traffic volumes. We think it's a much safer condition. And then ultimately, they'll go to the north and then end up back on Illinois. They'll get back on the path. And then in terms of communication, on the slide here is actually a sign that we're actually getting made and picking up tomorrow and probably installing on the trail in the next day or two. I think we have four or five of these that are going on the trail to start getting people notified of this work. Also, we'll be sending out letters. We'll be sending out the letters to not only the residents that are actually backing up onto the trail, because they'll hear the noise and see some of the traffic. We'll also send out letters to the homes that are on the detour path as well. We realize that this project is during peak biking season. The one thing I will say is that is unfortunately the reality of the Midwest, where the peak biking season is also the peak construction season. We are aware of that, and you know, as we show with our schedule, we're looking to expedite the work as much as we can, and we will keep people notified along the way. So with that, I can take any questions.
I think it's great that you're going to repaint the bike path. I actually live right near it, and we are on it all the time. So thank you for adding this to the list. I have two concerns. One is where are you going to stage the heavy equipment that I know you're going to need to do this?
Yeah, so we're still working on that with the contractor. Obviously, that's something that's going to be a priority. We haven't had the pre-construction meeting quite yet. I mean, I think the biggest challenge is the adjacency of the path to the railway. So that's obviously going to be priority one, where we have to make sure traffic isn't getting, you know, that traffic's able to still get over the tracks and that the trucks with asphalt are out of that area as well. But we are looking at multiple staging areas, I will say. There most likely will be some staging of asphalt trucks along western, but there also is opportunities like along Wesley, kind of where it kind of dead ends into the trail, where maybe there would be some room to like stage equipment there as well. But that's something we're still actively looking at.
Okay, I ask you to consider not using Ryan if you possibly can. It's already very, very narrow, and it's a busy railroad crossing, because it's the only place south of town to cross the tracks. And the amount of traffic that comes through for kids going to the day school, it's just, it's always, always, always busy. So I would appreciate, I think it would be better if it's possible to avoid it.
Yeah, we'll take a look.
And then the second question is, are you going to have signage along the detour route?
Correct.
For pedestrians, for cars to watch out for bicyclists?
Correct, yes.
And make sure you give them enough room, especially on Sheridan Road?
Yeah, correct. So it would be similar to whenever we closed the Illinois Woodland Bridges about two years ago. So it would be kind of similar to a vehicle detour, where you would basically at every point where the detour turns, there would be a sign with an arrow.
I would just ask that there be specific mention for drivers to be careful on Sheridan Road, that there will be cyclists due to the bike path being closed. Maybe could go in a newsletter or in a Lake Forest communiqué somewhere along the way.
Okay.
Thanks.
Other comments? Alderman Weber?
Byron, thank you so much. I was just going to add, maybe put this with Dana for communications, that we still have about one week of school left, and so it might be worth just pinging the different schools that might have children that are, use that bike path. schools that might have children that are, use that bike path, you know, to get to school. So, just to let them know they can help spread the word.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Alderman Walther?
Byron, when it connects to the bridge there at the north end, is the bridge 10 feet wide?
I believe so. Yes.
Other comments or questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is items for Omnibus vote consideration, of which there are 19 this evening. I will read them slowly. Giddy up. If anyone would like to have any item removed or taken separately, please let me know at the end, and we will take care of that. Item one, approval of the April 15th, 2024 City Council Meeting Minutes. Item two, approval of April 29th, 2024 Special City Council Workshop Meeting Minutes. Item three, approval of the May 6th, 2024 First Session City Council Meeting Minutes. Item four, approval of the May 6th, 2024 Second Session City Council Meeting Minutes. Number five, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with holding a raffle in the city of Lake Forest for McKinlock Post 264. Six, approve a one-year extension to an existing contract with Vogue Printers for Dialogue Newsletter Printing Services in the amount of $26,076 and a 5% contingency in the amount of $1,304 for a grand total of $27,380. Item seven, authorization for the city manager to execute a grant agreement between the city of Lake Forest and the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for the purchase of used police vehicles, subject to final review and approval of the city attorney. Item eight, approval of a change order for additional construction services to Efron Carlson &amp; Sons for the Deer Path Golf Course Restoration Project in the amount of $10,330.2. Item nine, authorize the police department to purchase fiscal year '25 subscription costs from Motorola Solutions associated with the Starcom 21 Communications Network for $26,322, plus a 10% contingency for a total of $28,956. Item 10, approval of a Public Works Committee recommendation to purchase 1,920 tons of road salt from Orton Salt in the amount of $162,183 for the fiscal year '25 winter. Item 11, award the low bid for the Field Court and Spring Lane Water Main Replacement and Valve Repairs Project to C. Zabo Contracting Incorporated, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $990,238 and a contingency in the amount of $39,762 for a total project cost of $1,030,000. Item 12, approval of a first-year renewal with Schroeder &amp; Schroeder Incorporated for the 2024 Concrete Street Curbs and Sidewalks Replacement Project, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount not to exceed $235,000. Item 13, award of the low bid for the McClory Bike Path Resurfacing Project to Manival Construction, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $347,189, as well as approving a contingency in the amount of $16,610 for a total cost of $363,799. Item 14, consideration of a recommendation from staff to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract for planning and design services to support development and preparations for implementation of a streetscape enhancement plan for Bank Lane with the Lakota Group and Thomas Engineering in an amount not to exceed $65,250. Item 15, consideration of a waiver of permit fees related to the Garden Initiative project at the History Center of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff. Approval by motion. Item 16, consideration of a waiver of permit fees related to the construction of a new boardwalk extending from the Forest Park Table Land to the Forest Park Beach. Approval by motion. Item 17, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Building Review Board for 1015 South Waukegan Road, 1400 Oak Knoll Drive, and 980 Malady Road. First reading, and if desired by the council, final approval. Item 18, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Zoning Board of Appeals for 872 North Moore Road and 285 Rose Terrace. First reading, and if desired by the council, final approval. And 19, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of an ordinance approving an updated city of Lake Forest official zoning map. First reading, and if desired by the council, final approval. Are there any items that the alderman would like removed or taken separately? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the Omnibus items?
So moved.
Second. Okay. City Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novick?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Goshgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Seven yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you. The next item is old business, of which there is none this evening. Next item is new business, of which there is none this evening. And the final item is an opportunity for additional comments by council members. Are there any comments? Hearing none. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C2. The City Council will be discussing collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. May I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So moved.
A second?
Seven.
A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Goshgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novick?
Aye.
Seven yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
And there will be no additional business after completion of the executive session.